Friends, it's 6:30 in Reed Field, Maine, and this is the beginning of the Select Board meeting. Will you please rise to salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you very much. Welcome to this, the Monday, August 23rd Select Board meeting here in Reed Field. We have a full agenda of items today, so we're going to step right in. Item number 22013 is for the approval of the Select Board minutes from July 19th and August 2nd. Would there be a motion for that?
I'll make a motion to approve the Select Board meeting minutes as presented for July 19th and August 2nd, 2021.
It has been moved and seconded. Thank you, Carol, to approve the minutes. Is there any discussion on these minutes? I just want to say thanks always, Kristin. Do a great job. All in favor? Thank you very much. We are now going to discuss warrants 5 through 8. These are also included in the packet. Warrants 5 through 8 were reviewed by Mr. Ralph Eno. Ladies and gentlemen, Ralph has the floor.
And then the hat will pass.
Yes.
All right, 5 and 6 to begin with. Payroll, $23,186.22. Vendors, a whopping $718, $763.19 for a grand total of $741,951.19. That kind of makes your eyes roll back in your head a little bit because it's a real anomaly. The reason being that the RSU 38 did not bill us in July, so we got double billed.
That was $677,000.
It was a biggie, yes.
Yep.
Whoops.
I'll second that.
I don't know how they managed to survive without a month's worth of income from... But anyway.
I don't know if you moved it, but I second.
I did move it.
Okay.
Just assumed.
And we've all signed it already.
Yeah.
So if anybody wants highlights, I can do that, but it's pretty cut and dried stuff. There's some GIS money for cemetery mapping, which I thought was interesting.
Our KV cog dues.
KV cog dues are in there. $5,804.06. The usual health insurance note at $8,123.30. We had some welding we had to do to repair a compactor can at the transfer station. $2,775. And then, as Catherine noted, the RSU hit. And that's, those are the highlights, basically.
Thank you, Ralph. It's been moved and seconded to accept the warrant 5 and 6 in the amount of $741,951.19. Is there any discussion on this? Very well, all in favor? Thank you very much. Warrants 5 and 6 have passed. If you would like to move us on to 7 and 8.
Moving right along.
Thank you, sir.
To 7 and 8. We have warrant 7, I believe, is payroll, $21,391.77. And vendors, various, $74,399.11 for a total of $95,798.88. And I would move adoption of same.
I'll second.
And some of the highlights, $3,500 for the Heritage Days fireworks. $3,500 again for cemeteries and stone repair, which is an ongoing effort. And ones I drive by, it appears to be making a difference. We're not like a lot of typical old New England cemeteries where things are cracked and heaved. I think our headstones, even the old ones, are in very, very good repair. We have another monthly health insurance premium, $8,123.28. We are making progress with some park and rec stuff. Ball field engineering, $1,898.75. So that process is ongoing. We sent a lot of money to the state in motor vehicle fees, $8,188.78. And we made what I believe is our first payment for this fiscal year to our dispatch service contractor.
For the whole year.
Is it?
For Winthrop, $6,702.
No, this is, there's a dispatch services in the amount of $5,442.34.
What is it now?
We are kind of fragmented on this.
That was.
Oh, I got you. That's Treasury. Yeah, Public Safety, Treasury, State of Maine.
I think we have a two-tiered dispatch deal.
That could be.
Yeah, and I think the amount that we pay Winthrop is ambulance only.
Yes, that is correct.
This is, this is for.
That was for the year.
You know? And we had $12,879.12 for various transfer station issues. So those, I think, are the highlights where our money went for 7 and 8.
Excuse me. Ralph, thank you very much. You always do a great job reviewing those, hitting those headlines, highlights. Excuse me. It's been moved and seconded to accept warrants 7 and 8. Is there any discussion on those warrants? Any questions for Ralph? Otherwise, all in favor? Thank you very much. All right. We move on to Select Board communications. If any members of the Select Board would like to speak to the public, you may do so now.
Can I go first?
Absolutely.
I usually defer to Catherine. She's strangely silent tonight. First of all, Dennis and Sean, thank you so much for Heritage Days. I, yeah, but you were there too. So I just, it was, I think it was well-managed, well-attended despite the weather and all the rest. And I think the folks that were there had a, had a good time. And I think we're building momentum annually. So bless you for your efforts.
Thank you.
Next, perhaps a not-so-friendly move. I think we all got mailers about the upcoming public hearing by the planning board.
I didn't get one.
Well, you're Kent Hills, so maybe you're, maybe you're not special enough. I don't know.
They're lucky.
But, yeah. But there are some inaccuracies, which is not surprising. And I just wanted to clarify for the record what I think the primary one is. And the card says, it lists the times. Last chance to speak, 7 o'clock. Last chance to speak and lead the board to support your legal dreams, dancing, blah, 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 8:00 PM. And here it is, the final verdict is delivered Wednesday, August 25th. The fact is that there will be a public hearing, but it is not the be-all, end-all with a final vote at the end of it. The board, I suspect, will reserve any kind of a decision until later on, especially in light of the fact that there is a 10-day window after public testimony for people to submit additional testimony. So the public record will not be complete until 10 days after the public hearing. So for those who plan on attending and think that there will be a final vote at the end of the public hearing, that's not true.
Thank you, Ralph.
My pleasure.
Always good to have the procedural information given so that everybody's on the same page.
And remember the 10-day window. You can go and listen, and I don't know whether this will be a Zoom deal as well. If it is, fine. But if you hear things that you don't like or think require you to respond as a private citizen, you have 10 days after that meeting to do so.
Do we know if those are calendar or business days?
I do not know what the regulations say about that.
My guess then is it's probably calendar days.
Thank you very much. Anything else?
No, I do want to say that Heritage Days was fantastic. I had a great time. My family had a good time. I think, I can't imagine how much more fun it would have been if it didn't rain. But it's definitely.
Too much more fun. You'd have had to pay more money.
Well, I think it would have, I, you know, it was really busy. It was hopping until that weather. So, and it was just getting started at that part of the day. So it was great. Good turnout, having to see people, fun day.
And I'll just add to that, that that was, we did our Spirit of America Awards at about five minutes after 2, and that was one of the most unique presentations I've been at in the pouring rain, under umbrellas and trees and ponchos.
Nice big maple tree.
Our three awardees this year were Deb Peel for her service to the town, especially with the library, and to Bruce Burgoyne for his work on the Select Board and the School Committee for many, many years, and to Christine Sammons for her work on the Select Board. So hopefully those are posted on the website. If they're not, I'll try to submit that to Kristin so it goes in and gets put up on there.
Thank you.
A quick one. In the idea of promoting local businesses, the Select Board has been behind. First, I think that first step is going to be to make our list on the town website accurate. So in the next two days, I hope to have something written up in the messenger to invite business owners in Reedfield and Fayette to give to us the current information so we can put it on the website. And then down the road, do something to promote local businesses and hopefully help everybody recover. And more information will be forthcoming.
Thank you for working on that, Carol.
No, awesome. I was just going to note, Kristin, if you could include Carol on your list for those articles, even though some of us don't ever turn them in on time, that would be me.
I just want to say one last word for Heritage Days. It was a great collaboration and a great day. In terms of the morning stuff, the breakfasts, the history, the book sale, all of those things, it just goes to show you that the Heritage Days is more about individual groups banding together on this special day than any one sort of, you know, sort of conglomeration kind of dictating what happens through the day. So that really is important to me because I think it's a great way to work together with many different organizations. We got some great news in the paper, write-ups about the day itself, write-ups about the pulling stones and the plaques that were unveiled, which are the ones at the ball field are already great to look at. The rest of them will be installed later. I didn't do it all by myself. There were a lot of people that were involved in that. And I just want to say thank you, especially to Sean, to all of the folks at the beach, Morgan, London, Noah, did a great job. I'd like to say thanks to all of our makers. The crafters had a tremendous time. Some of them did when the rain started left. I also want to say thanks to Sam Shane and the Scolded Dogs. They got a chance to play for about 15 minutes, and it was amazing when they did. And just all around, it takes a village to pull something like this off, and I really, really appreciate it. The biggest thing for me is the cooperation between the groups. When you get groups that have their own interests, to put some of those aside for just a second, just a day, when people all come together to our town to see all these things together, that's important to me. And it's that sandbox attitude where it's not everyone protecting their own peace. It's everyone inviting in and playing together. And that's what I think Reed Field is about. So to me, it's about putting some of those things aside and just working together for a great day. And I want to say thank you to everyone. All right. The next item on the agenda is for Town and Staff Reports, but with Eric not being here, I wonder if we could skip ahead and go over those. They are included in the packet. Is there any, any input about that?
No, I guess I'd just like to state for the record that the Town Manager, Eric Dyer, has an excused absence tonight.
Yep, we knew he would not be here. And so we will make sure, if I know Eric, there will be a comprehensive report the next time we see. We'd like to say thank you for Boards, Committees, Commissions, and Departments. The Assessors' Minutes of July 29th. Thank you very much, Ralph, for taking those. The Age Friendly Committee Meetings Minutes of June 9th, 2021. The Cemetery Committee Minutes, another example of catching up on activity.
That was a lot.
It was a lot. It was a lot of following a timeline of the Cemetery Committee Minutes. And this is something that we've talked about as a board. We will continue.
We will be working on that.
Yeah, we will be working on that, getting, getting a better sort of piece-by-piece update. Also, the Comprehensive Plan Committee update. Bill, is there, is there anyone on Zoom?
Just one.
Is it Henry?
We're watching the screen. G4, K4.
G4, K4. I don't know, I don't know if someone was supposed to be here for the Comprehensive Committee update. I assume if G4, K4 were here for that, then I would say that might be grace, grace, D and G K. But I would also just like to say that the Comprehensive Committee is still meeting. We were not able to have our last meeting the last Wednesday, but we are looking forward to hitting our goal of somewhere around October, November of 2022. I think we talked about that last time. So that's it for the Comprehensive Plan Committee. Yeah. Now is the time for public communication. If any members of the public would like to address the Select Board, you can do that now. There's no one here in person. But if our viewer on Zoom would like to speak with us, now's your chance. Hearing none, we will move on. We would like to now move on to item 22015. Consider the appointment of a Select Board member and the Town Manager to the KV cog general assembly. The general assembly is basically an elected official needs to be a part of this, and Eric, as the Town Manager, will also be working on this. So I have, I will do this. I am graciously nominating myself as this. I don't know.
So I'll make a motion then.
Thank you very much.
On that we appoint Dennis Price and Eric Dyer to represent the town of Reed Field at the KV cog general assembly.
Second.
All right, it has been moved and seconded to appoint Dennis Price and Eric Dyer as our KV cog general assembly representatives. Is there any discussion on this? Very well, all in favor? Thank you very much. I'm glad to do that. KV cog is a great conglomeration of professionals that help us navigate municipal business, and we appreciate it. Now, we'd like to consider the appointment. This is me. I'll need to do that. Consider the appointment of Chris Chaney to the Comprehensive Plan Committee. The Comprehensive Plan Committee is always looking for folks, and this is his first visit here with us. Information is in the pack. The term would be from 8/23 today until 6:30 of next year. That's June 30th of next year.
Are we waiving the requirement to?
Yes, we have waived the requirement for him to be here. I don't believe we were expecting him to be here. This is good. Chris Chaney is the, I guess.
Head of school.
Head of school at Kent Hill. And so having that perspective, I believe, would be valuable to the Comprehensive Plan. And so.
I'll make a motion to approve Christopher Chaney to the Comprehensive Plan Committee for a term beginning tonight and running through June 30th of 2022.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Thank you, Sean, for Chris Chaney to be a part of the Comprehensive Plan Committee. Is there any discussion on this?
Well, just one question because, as you just heard, we know the completion date is going to run beyond. Are we going to have to reappoint these people come June 30th?
I believe that will be the case.
Okay.
Yeah.
But they should be automatic.
Do a slate because we already have them. Let's wait. All in favor? Very well, thank you very much. There is that for Mr. Chaney. This, here in my hand is also the official form. We voted on Jeffrey Carlson, but we did not sign last time. So we are going to do that. And you may have to just sign and write your name in. You guys were not included there. All right, we move to a public hearing. We are going to now enter for considering a remote meeting policy pursuant to Title I MRSA 403-B. What this is, is about our remote participation policy for the town. The idea being that when we pass this, depending on how the business goes through and how we are able to conduct our meetings, we will be able to do that remotely. So I wondered if anyone had any information or if anyone wanted to talk about our policy. Go ahead, Ralph.
Yeah, don't, excuse me, but for the public hearing, isn't that for the public? And then we close it, and then we have our comments, so.
There we go. Anyone? I'm going to take that as a no.
Where's grace?
Very well.
So we'll close the public hearing.
The public hearing is closed. Good, excellent.
Thank you, Dennis.
My pleasure. Now, we can talk about this policy. This is the second reading. I just want to make sure everyone understands that. Once we get through the second reading and we agree on this tonight, this policy will become part of our governing documents. Go ahead, Ralph.
Okay. I'm glad to see that the document has been amended to address our concern as expressed last meeting about forums and voting.
Yep.
And frankly, I don't think either issue needed to be there. If you're present and voting, regardless of the means, you're fine. And in reading over the Enabling State Statute, I see this as being pretty much completely in sync with, with our enabling language. So I think we're good to go.
I really like this. I think it gives us a nice framework. I think it spells things out. And I think, this is my little moment. I think that if you do not embrace this technology and meeting like this, then you have a step off of the merry-go-round, and you're going to get hurt. And what we try to do on this board is continuously give access to the public so they know what we're doing and why. And this policy, I think, will go a long way into continuing to foster more participation and involvement and letting people know how their town is run. So.
I'd like to just add that I think when we have, we're going to talk later tonight about having a chairs meeting. I'd like us to, at that meeting, discuss which boards, well, I think we're the only board, but which committees, the expectation would be from the Select Board that will have remote meetings also. For instance, maybe the Planning Board is one that should always have a remote option, whereas maybe the Solid Waste Committee would not, or the Cemetery Committee. Just trying to think about the public interaction and the, the amount of public participation that usually comes to a meeting that we might want to have that discussion with the chairs, as you said, so more people can be involved.
Yeah. I also think it might, you know, I would have no problem with every committee and board accepting this because then they would have a framework, a guiding document in case they needed to do something like this. So I would like to see the committees and boards all sort of sign on to this as kind of a blanket policy, but knowing that, you know, sometimes you might not need to do that in terms of remote participation, but just have it be there.
Um, so I would make a motion, not seeing any other comments, that we accept the remote participation policy as presented as the second reading in our packet tonight.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the remote participation policy as it appears in our packet. Is there any discussion on this? Very well, all in favor? Thank you very much. This is coming around. I will take those. Thank you so much. We appreciate that, everyone, for making that go so smoothly. All right. We are going to discuss the possibility now, item 22011. Discuss the possibility of a November special town meeting. Since Eric is not here and has the best sort of handle on this and can explain it from a reason, I would like to, perhaps, it's just a discussion, but I wondered if we could table this discussion until Eric returns. Would there be any objection to that?
What's the deadline to start?
I think we're safe enough. I think it's like 40 days, right?
It's going to be real close.
Because our next scheduled meeting of this board.
Till the 21st of September.
20th.
20th.
The 2nd, November 2nd, yeah.
This Friday?
No, it would be the 24th of September, yes.
No, the idea was to get it whenever. Friday of this week. So I would vote, I would say, let's discuss it.
Sure. I have, I have enough information about this that I think I can give us a basic outline, and I can do that. Again, it's just a discussion. I think, do we, we should make a decision by the end of this? Is that the goal? Okay. I don't know, I don't know if it is a discussion, the possibility, but I know that we should discuss it. The reason we want to have a special town meeting, which is essentially a secret ballot vote on town issues on the November 2nd state election, is because there are some questions that we would like to have answered and voted on in regards to, I would say, two major issues. Number one, when Article 38 was defeated in June, there were a number of additional statutes that were included in Article 38 that will be broken out individually in individual questions on that November ballot. Things like shoreline variance, shoreline setbacks, things like that will be broken out individually on there. So that's one of the reasons we wanted to have that. There's also a question about broadband. And it's a general sort of, I would say, would you say it's an informative question?
Yes, it's a direction. Well, we're not sure yet, but it will be a direction-based question. It will not be a question.
It won't be a binding question.
I don't think we're going to be asking anyone for money to bond for a project, but we're going to be asking if you're willing to have us bond and continue in that direction because we should have a cost at that time. But maybe not in time for the question to be put on the ballot. So, but it will be very informative to the committee going forward on how fast we proceed. And I think on the Article 38, I think it is going to be broken out into eight different questions.
Right.
But each section would be broken out into a separate one because it wasn't clear when it failed if it was because the whole thing was not acceptable to the public or if it was a particular part or parts. And some of these issues are important to the land use ordinance to meet current state guidelines and to protect property and other homeowners. For instance, there was something in there, I think, that would limit how high a particular structure could go on the shoreline so that you wouldn't be blocking the view of someone who's behind you, who then could not see out to the lake. And so there are things like that that the state has put in new language for, and that is not being addressed. And so we want to get as many of these things approved, hopefully by the public as we can.
So, so what we basically want to do is add those to the ballot that folks would be filling out in November. If this is a discussion, what I would do is I would wonder if there's anyone who is not in favor of separating this article out or having, rather, I should say, having the special town meeting in November to correspond with this. All right. So I believe the guidance, if I read this correctly, the guidance of the Select Board is to suggest that we go ahead and move forward with the special town meeting in November. Excellent.
Which is a secret ballot because all town, well, it's not all town meetings, but this would be a.
To incorporate town issues as well as the items that will be on for statewide consideration.
Absolutely. And that sends us into a nice segue. Item 21068, consider next steps for investigating broadband internet and the possibility of a local fiber-to-the-home network. Catherine is our representative on that committee. If you would like to tell us a little bit about that, Catherine.
Well, we authorized the payment to Casco Bay advisors at our last meeting and that was sent and the contract was signed for that work and the details of that are in your packet that was sent out on August tenth. To date, Reed Field is the only town who has actually sent that off. And so if you've read through that or for anyone who's listening, um, the parts of that that will generate cost savings would be the latter parts meaning contract negotiations and issuing the RFP. So if other towns do come on board before we get to that point, point, then the cost would go down. There's a fixed cost for doing that. And if one town does it, then the one town pays it. If two towns do it, two towns split it. And so on. The other towns are working on doing it, but it's not happened to date. So we'll see where that goes. The timeline there is that we would have all of that back by the nineteenth of September.
In order to be in a, in a position to deal with the latest round of, of state grants.
Yeah. So at that point, we would be able to issue an RFP a week later and then be looking at getting information back from people, potential bidders by the end of October. And so this is why I was saying on the any article that we would write for a special town meeting, we won't have an actual number until the RFPs come back. But at least we're making progress and we'll be getting closer to knowing. And so we might word in an article, something like, would the town be willing to spend up to three point four million dollars to, to complete this project and not talk about how the funding would come and not authorizing the funding, but just trying to get a feel for where people are at or for whatever amount we think it's going to be. So that's where we're at.
That ties into the special town meeting. And I think it's important to note that, that we always try to sort of operate like this, ask what the people want and take that and use that and that'll be the opportunity and it will be, it's a state election. It should be a, a nice, robust turnout.
Better representative sample.
Yeah. And, and I hope that we can do that. So excellent. Is there any other items for that consideration, Catherine?
I don't think so. The broadband committee is still working on the local level and we'll probably be putting out a survey sometime in September. The WKLCBA, the regional committee isn't doing much right now because we're all working on our own town levels to bring things together. And I just wanted to make sure, Kristin, that what we said a minute ago about a special town meeting, that is a secret ballot process because special town meetings can be held on the floor. We're right now are only prescribed secret ballot town meeting is the annual. So, but that was the intent of the board, right? That we do it by secret ballot.
Yes.
Are you talking about at polling places?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, just like normal.
Not the old way when everybody convened on the floor and spoke and you did a raising of hands.
Everybody's going to come together.
Right.
Right. But we still call it a town meeting.
Okay, thank you.
But it takes place not in, well, it is in person, but okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, don't, yeah, don't. What else? Anything else about that? Very well. We move to new business. Item twenty-two zero seventeen is consider taking action on the poverty abatements discussed during the executive session. The select board met earlier before this meeting in an executive session to consider two poverty abatements and we will entertain motions on those now.
I'd like to make a motion to grant an abatement in the amount of one thousand four hundred fifty-seven dollars and twenty-eight cents for twenty nineteen pursuant to title thirty-six MRSA, paragraph eight forty-one, section two.
It has been moved and seconded to grant that abatement. Is there any discussion? Very well, all in favor of granting the abatement for twenty nineteen? Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to grant an abatement in the amount of one thousand two hundred and two dollars and sixty-nine cents for the twenty twenty taxes pursuant to title thirty-six MRSA, paragraph eight forty-one, section two.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to accept this property, poverty abatement for this amount for the year twenty twenty. All in favor? Or is there any discussion? All in favor? Very well.
Um, I would make a motion to not accept an abatement or not approve an abatement in the amount of two thousand five hundred seventy-two dollars and nineteen cents for twenty twenty-one taxes due to those taxes not being in arrears pursuant to title thirty-six MRSA, section eight forty-one, two.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to refuse or rather deny this poverty abatement for as I mentioned before, is there any discussion? All in favor? Thank you very much. Item twenty-two zero eighteen is consider action on sending the record of the vote on article forty-one on the June eighth, twenty twenty-one town meeting ballot in accordance with the language of the article. I believe, is this the carbon footprint?
Yes. And that's exactly what the, the article stated we would do.
Yeah. So this is basically pro forma, pretty much just standard stuff. Get it out of the way.
Repeat or elaborate?
Sure.
What?
I'm going to try to find it right now.
This was the one where the people of Reed Field were asked to send a message to our legit state legislative body about carbon footprint rebates.
To individuals across the country.
Yeah.
Right.
And what is this? What is this action we're asking?
To sub- to actually submit that the town of Reed Field voted in favor.
I have a question.
Yes.
Are we open to questions?
Absolutely. In fact, if you want, I can read it to you.
I'll go right ahead. Yeah.
Article forty-one states, "To see if the town will authorize the Board of Selectment," so they have already voted in the affirmative, "to convey to state legislators, members of Congress, governor and president of the United States that the town hereby calls upon our federal elected representatives to enact carbon pricing legislation to protect Maine from the costs and environmental risks of continued climate inaction. To protect households, we support cash-backed carbon pricing that charges fossil fuel producers for their carbon pollution and rebates the money collected to all residents on an equal basis with monthly dividend checks. The record of the vote approving this article shall be transmitted by written notice to the above-mentioned parties by the supportive selectmen within thirty days of this vote."
And that actual article passed?
That passed. The people voted.
So I don't understand, pardon me, why, why are we doing this since it was voted that we do it to begin with?
Well, now is it's, that's the whole point. It's like saying, we, you know, it's we, they told us to do it and now is the time when we do it. So that's all we're voting.
Because the article said that we would send it.
Right. It's not. And I, I think, I think it's not necessarily whether or not we agree with carbon pricing.
It's just implicit that we have to do this now.
People, right. This was the article. This was the question. People said, yes, we want this. And now we are fulfilling our legal obligation.
We're bound to do it by virtue of the vote.
Indeed.
Okay. So I guess my point's moot because it's coming after the vote, but it's a very political, politicized position.
Sure it is.
This board, I think, should be apolitical. And I was really shocked to see that on there.
This was, oh, sorry. Yep. This was submitted. This could happen. This was submitted by the, an organization or a resident. And so as you can do, the, the resident asked us to put this on here at that.
There are two avenues to do this.
Yes.
One is by petition and getting signatures and the other is by blessing of the, of the select board. But given the fact that we were in the middle of the COVID pandemic and things were locked down, I think the prevailing sentiment on part of the board was that we should just, you know, let the people decide what they want to do and enable, enable the choice and see where the choice lands. And the vote is the vote regardless of how informed it or uninformed it may be.
I think moving forward, that is a.
It wasn't a unanimous vote, but as with any vote, once the board accepts either yes or no, then the entire board stands behind the vote of the board. And so next time you'll be part of the voice to
Absolutely.
Add to the discussion about whether we should do something.
In that case, I would.
I'll make a motion to approve sending the result of the vote to the parties mentioned.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded to send in accordance with article forty-one from June eighth, twenty twenty-one. The meeting ballot in accordance with the language of the article to send that on. Is there any discussion? Very well, all in favor? Thank you very much. All opposed?
Abstaining.
Abstaining. Thank you very much. Excellent. We are going to now move to item twenty-two zero nineteen.
Ask a procedural.
Yes, please do.
I'm not sure that we can have an abstention there because there's no conflict of interest.
Okay.
I think we have to either have a yea or a nay.
A nay.
Okay. So I'd like to re-vote, please.
Sorry.
That's okay. No, no, I think you're absolutely right. All, I would entertain a motion to approve the article forty-one being passed on. I want to do this all the way back.
So I'll make a motion to submit the results of article forty-one as voted on on June eighth, twenty twenty-one to the parties named in the article.
Good. And the article passed. So it's been moved. Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on passing this on? Very well, all in favor? Okay, all opposed? That's marked and recorded. Very well, the motion passes and we will do as the vote says. Now we move to twenty-two zero nineteen, consider a report on the August, August second, select board retreat. I submitted my report. Did it get to everyone? No. Okay. No, I didn't. I, I sent it to Catherine and Eric. But what I would like to do is I, I'm going to add this. This will be distributed to you. But what I did was I typed up using Carol's notes, using the papers that we had. And I just want to share this with you. The Reed Field Select Board convened with all members in an open workshop on August second. Some goals that we came up with, we reviewed goals from our previous year. We had carryover goals and then we also wanted to have goals that moved on in to the future. So what I'd like to do is basically recap these for everyone and make sure that everyone hears this and we are in agreement. The goal outcome, some of the goals that we want to, that we accomplished last year that we felt were done. We're investigating the Church Road sidewalk. That's going to happen and we're in the process now doing some studies and we should see that be done hopefully on the timeline. Determine salt and sand shed, say that five times fast, repair replacement plan. We have done that. We know what we are looking for. It's going to basically be a concrete block sides with a fabric canvas top. And we are glad to have that much different cost than before. And also, one of the goals we had for last year that we accomplished was to review the pension plan and to improve plan for employee participation and retention. We managed to do that and I'd like to say thanks to Ralph for heading up that.
Not quite there yet.
We're, we're, yeah, we're, we're there. We're close. We also, one goal that we had that we I'm going to explain finalized solar energy plan for town facilities. We discussed this and what we want to do is coming up with basically efficiencies in town operations and efficiencies can be energy, efficiencies can be procedural ordinances, things of that nature. And so to me, it's important that we keep that distinction in mind. The goals for twenty-one, twenty-two that the select board came up with are always to revise, review and draft governance documents as needed. We are looking at cannabis apology, policy, application review, minutes policy. And we just finished this evening, our moat meeting policy. We want to continue our commitment to energy efficiency and again efficiencies in general in our operations as a town. We want to continue our multi-year effort to bring high-quality broadband service to town. We want to improve downtown traffic safety. That includes the Church Road sidewalk, the corner parking and the post office area parking as well as the beach crosswalk. We also want to support the comprehensive plan update, which is ongoing and in the middle of meeting. And we also want to create and fund, this is the big one, create and fund a parks and recreation position to develop and support programs and events at the beach and fairgrounds using ARP money. Those are our goals listed for twenty twenty-one. And I'll just wrap up by saying this, we delegated some items to the town manager to help in investigate and to further. One of those being new heat pumps and windows here at the town office. We want to include the tree cutting, ditching and paving as part of the CIP and efficiency plan. We're going to have a business focus where we're with the help of Carol, focus in the messenger trade groups and other areas to advertise and promote businesses in Reed Field. We are going to talk to the CEO and planning board about more details on applications and approachable running of meetings and, and with our civil discourse, how to call a meeting and how to handle a meeting. And then we just mentioned this tonight, to support a special town meeting in November. It's a lot to go through, but this will be distributed to everyone and it will be our guiding document. We do this so that the goals that we set, we have a direction to go to. And I think that that's important for us. If anyone would like to say anything, we still have some time to talk about these goals.
I have a couple of comments. So one, I was going through all the emails today because I'm closing out an email account and found all of our meeting notes and so on, which I deleted because it was so much fun. From two thousand ten, which is when we first developed the CIP here in Reed Field. So you might think that that's something we've had forever and while eleven years is a long time, it isn't forever. And I'm just realizing that we're still revising it. You know, still finding things that can be improved. And I, I think it's wonderful that we have that tool and that we're utilizing it and planning ahead and trying to keep taxes as stable as possible, which kudos go out to our assessing committee who did that with the commitment of taxes that you folks made very recently. So that's awesome. And the second thing is concerning the heat pumps. I'm not sure that they were in the capital improvement plan, but the windows for the town office are. And I'll make a motion. I don't know that anybody will even entertain it, but sitting here tonight, it's got to be at least seventy-five degrees, if not warmer. We can't have the air conditioning on in the winter. We can't have the heat on while we're recording a meeting. I don't think the air quality is acceptable, especially in light of COVID. And it would be more comfortable. People would feel more like attending. It would be safer. And so I would make a motion to direct the town manager to get estimates for a heat pump, at least in the upstairs meeting room as soon as possible.
You made a motion?
I did.
It's been moved and seconded to direct the town manager to investigate getting heat pumps into the upper area of the town hall. Do you want to prioritize this fast track and get it done as soon as it can? Is that your intent?
Yeah, I might as soon as possible, probably shouldn't be that by October first, November first. I don't know when they're available. So.
Ralph would like to offer an amendment because if we're going to undertake a heat pump strategy for the building, that ought to be comprehensive. It will cost us more if we have to add on first floor. So if we're going to do it, let's talk about the entire building and do it in one phase so we don't have additional difficulties down the road with the tie-in. And I would, I would be in favor of that. It's a, it's a carton horse deal. And I can't remember budget-wise whether or not we are funded for this enterprise this fiscal year.
We can use the American Rescue Plan Act money because that's exactly what it was designed for was for ventilation and so on in public buildings.
Do we have enabling language in the budget to spend those funds on a discretionary basis? I can't remember that either.
It's in our beginning articles of town meeting.
I believe in our.
I believe in our meeting, the retreat Eric had said that those would be covered as part of that.
All right, just, I mean, we may have the money, but did the town give us permission to spend it? That's what I'm asking. And is that approval built into the fiscal twenty-one twenty-two budget? I don't know that it is, I suspect it is, but I can't remember.
There's an article, I don't know which number, we should probably know, one of us should know where the link is.
Anyway, if it isn't, we have, we have a special town meeting coming up where if it's not explicitly stated in the budget approval, we could get a number and put it in in the special town meeting.
It is explicitly stated that the town authorizes the Select Board to spend any monies that it receives via grants.
Then I think we're saying.
Article thirty-one shall the town vote authorize expenditure revenues from federal, state, private grants whose purpose for which the grant is intended.
Okay.
And it was approved. It's a standard article that we leave in there just for situations like this where something comes in.
Right, so basically we would use, we would want to prioritize some of the ARP money to make this space more habitable, is that what we're saying?
The town hall.
The town hall.
The town hall.
Yep.
Question, are those funds needing to be spent in this calendar year, do you know the timeline?
No, I think there's a five-year window.
I think it was twenty twenty-four.
Yeah. We have time.
I don't know, I can tell.
It's not a use it or lose it immediate scenario.
Is the winter equally uncomfortable as far as heat goes? Because I don't know that.
There's a whole different set of circumstances and none of them are good.
The blower is right here behind us and it's very loud, it's a kind of, sorry for the microphone.
Which, which.
Sound that comes through and so we can't have on.
Life very difficult.
Right.
And I, I believe Eric thought that it would be covered under the capital improvement as well. I think there was, he thought there was, at our retreat, that there was two avenues in which he could pursue it.
I'm for it, I also think it is a value added, because this space is for rent. I know a lot of other committees and boards meet here, I think it's a value-added service. Perhaps the rental fee could be reflected, something like that, I'll leave that up to Eric who makes the policies on that, but it seems like to me that it would be a value-added service. It would contribute to a lot of meetings, it would benefit a lot of folks, so. Yeah, I understand where we're going with that.
And it is efficient.
It is efficient.
Absolutely, yeah, it's much better than these.
Even than the central air that's downstairs, it would be cheaper to run the heat pumps. And they do heat also, so they could provide the heat and the current heating system could be the secondary heat. So I think we need to vote on Ralph's amendment before we can vote on the motion. Do you have his amendment, Kristen?
To do all of it, yeah, as a comprehensive look? I would mind that as long as we prioritize this space.
Depending on how big a one you need, they can put a compressor or they put the head unit, sorry, they put the base unit outside and you can run two heads off of it.
Yep.
And so that's where you can get the cost savings.
I would think it'd be much more efficient to do it all at once than to, we're gonna do this, then we're gonna do that and tie it together.
More trips out for the contract.
This is an old building, the the hookups on an interior basis are gonna be challenging, so you better do it one time as opposed to having it set up for the upstairs and then find out that what you have installed doesn't necessarily match with what you want to do downstairs.
The hookups actually is just a single, less than two-inch round hole through the wall and the pipe runs outside, that's it.
I had brief discussions with Eric about it and he's obviously been thinking about it and my sense is that it, it makes, it's probably better to do it as a, as a complete project.
So it's been moved and seconded to direct the town manager to look at providing heat pumps and energy efficiency savings at the town office using our anticipated ARP funds. Is there any more discussion?
We need to vote on the amendment to do the whole building first.
All right, then what I would like to do is double-check it has been amended rather than just part of upstairs in Catherine's motion to include the entire building. That's what we're voting on currently and I would take a second to approve Ralph's amendment.
Second.
Okay.
Take it with Sean.
Second, and it's been seconded and moved to amend Catherine's original motion. And what we're adding is a comprehensive full building look at all of that, heat pump. All in favor of adding Ralph's amendment, raise your hand. All opposed? Very well, we are now voting to instruct the town manager to look at the building as a whole to install heat pumps and energy efficiency savings into the whole building with the ARP funds.
As soon as possible.
As soon as possible, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to look at the entire building and for these efficiencies, is there any discussion? Very well, all in favor? Thank you very much, the motion passes, thank you Catherine for bringing this up. I think it's a great point and if we can address it easily, we'll do that. We move on to twenty-two twenty, schedule the annual chairs meeting and discuss potential agenda items. This meeting has gone by the wayside a few times and we want, for the past few years, for various reasons. And we want to do this, this is a meeting of the chairs of all of the boards and committees that do have anything to do in Reedfield. It's an opportunity for the leaders of these groups to get together and talk about this, also to touch base about what each other is doing. And we have proposed having this be the fourth of October. And we would have this be a part of our regular meeting schedule. It would be on the fourth of October, time to be determined. I don't know if we want to do that at six-thirty, if we'd have beforehand.
Are we having a regular meeting that night?
We're having a regular meeting that night. Who are scheduled to.
And then are we having another one in October?
Yes, October eighteenth. So maybe the fourth is just the chairs meeting.
That's what my suggestion would be, if we just did the chairs meeting.
Yeah.
And we've done that in different ways over the years. It's been held here, it's been held at Marana Cook. We've done it, I think every time we've done it, we've done it with some sort of refreshment. So there's like a dessert and a beverage so that it's a little bit more relaxed and inviting and comfortable than formal on, you know, just get together and be sermoned that. We want it to be a conversation.
So do we want to go ahead and schedule the annual chairs meeting for Monday, October fourth?
I'm really sorry.
Yeah.
What is, what is, what is it?
What is the chairs meeting?
Yes, please.
Sure, the chairs meeting is an opportunity for the chairs of the various town boards and committees to get together in one place. We would be there, I would be there, we would talk to the chairs, just as a way of, it's really a communication tool. I think it sets a nice precedent, we had talked about, you know, our discourse policy, having civil discourse, it'd be a great opportunity for that, talk about those minutes, the policy that we mentioned, so it's just an opportunity to bring those heads of committees together.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
And the idea is that they will attend, if they can't themselves attend, then they appoint another representative so that all committees are represented and the whole Select Board comes.
So then I would move to have this meeting on October fourth at six-thirty PM just to keep consistent with our regular meetings.
And that would be a workshop, not a recorded meeting for Bill, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
We could do warrants.
Then we have to call a meeting.
Yeah, we'll do that the next, because we have the next on the eighteen, yeah.
Won't be my problem.
Is there a second to have this chairs meeting on the fourth?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to have the annual chairs meeting happen on Monday, October fourth at six-thirty PM, is there any discussion?
I think we should set an end time so people know.
Yeah.
Are we looking at seven-thirty?
I think, I think eight o'clock, an hour and a half.
And so what do we got, six or so, a half a dozen boards that we're really gonna talk about?
We've got more than twelve.
You've got the planning board, you've got the cemetery group, you've got parking, you've got the recreation commission, you've got trails, you've got conservation.
You've got appeals, solid waste. Age-friendly.
We got a bunch.
We got a dozen, so yeah.
Say a two-hour meeting.
Twenty, there are twenty committees.
Let's do a two-hour meeting, six-thirty to eight-thirty.
Okay, and are we expect, I think I would ask that by, well, we should do it tonight. We need to decide if we want these folks to report anything out or not. I can tell you that in the past when we've had people report out, some people come with three pages and they want to read it to us and other people come with nothing. And I don't know if that's our purpose, is our purpose to hear from them like a recap or is our purpose to have a discussion about current issues?
We need to have a better handle on what it is they need point forward and how we interface with them and then put pro quo what we think we require of them that perhaps is not happening right now. I think we would have spent a lot of time talking about minutes.
So you're a discussion, you're saying more of a discussion, not a reporting out.
Right.
I think we report out, we get the reporting out when we see the minutes and I think if the minutes can come in, in a better way, I think what we'll be able to do is then we won't need to rely on their reporting out as much because we'll know what's going on. So my, my hope for this meeting was that it would be a discussion, we'd talk about the minutes, we talk about what some of the needs and wants and basically split it up a little bit like a workshop proper that they are a part of. And I think that would be something I had mentioned about putting together a packet for that, that would be my responsibility and I can do that, make sure you get that before that actual meeting.
And they should actually start the process by saying, you know, our invitation is to you, tell us what you need that you think we're not delivering right now or how can we do it better?
Yep.
And then it will evolve from there, I think it's more collaborative that way and they haul a lot of water for us and a lot of times it ends up here and we are not exactly sure how it got here to begin.
Good, so then it's been moved and seconded to have our meeting on October fourth. We will add the eight-thirty end times of six-thirty to eight-thirty, all in favor of this? Very well, we will see our chairs and we'll make sure that they get a letter, we'll make sure that it's available. It's, I think, important that our chairs be there.
Can you add that to our calendar, Kristen? Otherwise I won't remember it.
A point of information.
Yes.
Eric already has my draft of a minutes policy.
Okay, sounds good.
So he should send it to you guys, I would assume, for review in our next Select Board meeting so that we can fine-tune it to make it pretty much representative of what we think we need and then we can present it to them versus just sending a cold document out there saying, what do you think?
So maybe we could have a first reading prior to that meeting and a second afterwards.
All right, thank you Ralph, thank you everyone, we're, our last item twenty-two twenty-one. This is consider expanding the comprehensive plan committee from seven voting and two alternate members to eleven voting members. This is, I think, a procedural change, I think if we can get eleven voting members, we should have them. The comprehensive plan committee is so long and important that as people fall off and join, I think if they are voting members, the, you know, you get a little bit more buy-in and I think that it's just spreading some of the, well, this was part of when we originally did the comprehensive plan, we had this opportunity. It just looks like now we're trying to follow through with adding eleven voting members.
And we just appointed one more tonight, so now they are eight plus two alternates.
Yes, that is correct.
So I would make a motion to expand the comprehensive plan committee to eleven voting members.
It has been moved and seconded to expand the comprehensive plan committee, hang on one second, from seven voting and two alternate members to eleven voting members. Is there any discussion about this motion?
Yes.
Yes.
What necessitated the need? I've noticed over the course of our last several meetings, we have had several resignations and I'm wondering whether or not, I'll put it very bluntly. Are some people just not happy with, with the process and, and how members are interacting with each other?
I believe that the issue mostly lies in the fact that there was, there were a couple of issues that couldn't be helped from the KV cog side. And I'm talking about folks who are working on this that had automobile accidents and that sort of thing. So some of the continuity of the committee has been a little bit upended due to that. And what they're trying to do is, I think when you have more voting members, it makes it seem a little bit more important to them and there's new focus on getting the committee so that we can finish up by the end of next year. So if I had to answer that question, I would say that this is a move that will hopefully make sure that people stick around a little bit, I think that's the goal.
Okay, but now that you've expanded the voting base, I think it also has to be made very clear to all appointed members that attendance is mandatory because you can't, you can't have haphazard attendance and then show up and vote on it.
Yeah, the attendance wasn't an issue.
There has to be continuity because the discussion is ongoing, you are forming, you know, a comprehensive document and you can't come to one and miss two and it, and I just, yeah.
They're, they're.
We lost some key members and that concerns.
Yeah.
Sean?
Well, I, I was on it from the beginning and I only left due to making sure we didn't have too many heads from the Select Board, but I would say attendance wasn't that terrible, it was more that, like you said, that comprehensive document requires a lot of work and there is, there's a lot more sections than seven. And so many individuals had to head up more than one section and that's a lot of time. And I think we had to spread that wealth a little bit more.
Okay, so we have to be pretty careful in terms of maybe depending on what, defining that workload and fitting the, fitting the personnel to the workload.
Right, and that's the KV cog aspect of this, they run those meetings, they delegate and make sure they have that and that's something I can expect from them, I can tell you.
But if we're gonna add extra members, those, those members should have specific areas of expertise, if at all possible, to fill in those gaps. And I don't know who they are because I haven't been here that long, but I would think that that, given what Sean has described, that's gonna be the driver.
Yeah.
Well, I think a couple of those resignations were due to personal reasons.
Yes.
Not because it was an issue with the committee at large, although I do understand that it's a little frustrating with the pace of the work as someone has already mentioned.
It takes a long time to put these together.
Right, but I think we thought that KV cog was going to have a more heavy stake in this, but they, they couldn't because there have been issues, as Dennis said, that came up that caused things to not move as quickly as they thought.
Staffing.
It's staff.
Staffing.
Staffing.
KV cog staffing, that's, that's, that has shifted.
So they short of planners and they're probably doing this for a half a dozen other towns.
I know for a fact Monmouth is going through this right now too and they're, they're probably about three months ahead of us, but they're still, it's still very tedious work.
Takes staff time.
Yeah, so I think, I think the best thing we can do is open it up to have more voting members so that that way it's a little bit more spread out and I think this will benefit the plan, the committee.
And do we know if there are interested parties? Because I think the people we've got on so far recently.
Yeah, Chris Chaney.
There were, most of them, well, some of them have just been replacing others.
Right.
From similar, like somebody.
So is the intent that we would make the two alternate members into full-time voting members?
I don't think we have alternate members.
I don't know, I don't know the specific answer.
So I guess I would like to make an amendment that, or not an amendment, but just that we, in the discussion, that the idea here is to first ask any alternate members if they want to be appointed as permanent.
I would say they have a right of first refusal.
Right, rather than recruiting new people.
Because that'll get you closer to your eleven threshold and then fill in the gaps from there.
Exactly, right.
Okay.
I believe we still have two alternates that are on the committee, but just based on what we got for right.
Any other questions about that? I, I just, I think this is a procedural thing that will help us.
Well, if it helps, because this is probably the most important thing the town.
It is creating a guiding document. All in favor of expanding from seven members to alternates to eleven members? All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed? Very well, thank you very much for that, that covers our agenda. We hope to see Eric next time and I appreciate everyone joining us. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you very much.